I can just do a couple of housekeeping rules. May I just remind you that if we do have a fire alarm, it isn't a fire drill, it is a true alarm. And can I ask that you assemble outside waitrose? And can I also ask that all mobile phones are either switched off or to silent? Thank you. Emma, do we have any informal questions?
None, Chairman.
Thank you, Emma. In that case, can I move to the next item? And can I ask that we look at the minutes of the last meeting? And can I ask members if you are satisfied that the minutes of the last meeting held on the first of September 2015 are agreed? And can I sign these as a correct record? Thank you, members. I'll sign those at the end of this meeting. Mr Wenham, any apologies for absence?
Apologies include the Leader of the Council. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr Wenham. And moving on to the next item, any declarations of interest?
No declarations are received in advance.
Members, any declarations at all that we haven't mentioned yet? No? And, Mrs McQuillan, any questions received from members of the public?
They're received.
Thank you. So we move to the next item, which is item five, and that's the executive forward programme. Item five, have you all had a chance to read and digest, members? Any comments? Anything you would like to amend, update? No? Right, we'll take that as agreed. Thank you. And we'll move on to the next item, item six, which is budget management. councillor Ramsdale. We also, I note, have a supplementary annex which has been circulated to all members before this item. Councillor Ramsdale, would you like to take this item?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The Budget Management Report, this is the third Budget Monitoring Report for 2015/16, reviewing performance against budget. The report initially included four recommendations, but as you just said, there's a fifth one being added. The general fund reserve revenue, sorry, the general fund is forecast to remain close to budget. There are some forecast variances, as could be seen in the table on page fourteen. These items will be included in the reviews for next year's budgets, to see if we can make adjustments there. Building control income received for the first four months was higher than budgeted. At this stage, there's thirty thousand pounds of extra income compared to the budget. Approval is sought to via half of that, fifteen thousand pounds, to the staffing budget to cover the additional agency staff costs which have been incurred in the provision of the service. Income from planning fees is forecast to exceed budget by seventy-five thousand pounds. This level of work requires additional temporary staff to process the applications. Approval is sought to via the full seventy-five thousand to the staffing budget to meet additional agency staff costs incurred in generating the income. There is thus a net nil impact on the general fund. Moving on to the general fund capital, at this point, slippage has been identified of a million into next year for the Memorial Hall project. The South Street Public Convenience in Farnham has been closed for many years and has been left locked up. The bad news is that despite looking for an alternative use for this small building, nothing suitable has been found. So it has been agreed that it should be demolished and the site returned back to grass. The work will be completed over a period of weeks and can be carried out in October, November 2015. It is thus recommended that a budget approval of six thousand five hundred pounds be approved from the contingency funds. Note my emphasis on that word 'suitable', which needs to be inserted in paragraph fourteen of the report. I understand that several suggestions were made, but none of them found suitable for adoption. Request is also made to the executive to approve the use of the repairs and renewals fund to cover the cost of a replacement countryside vehicle for seventeen and a half thousand pounds. The oldest vehicle is ten years old, and I'm afraid it's exceeded its original useful life. I think it's broken down. Overall, the capital programme projects are on budget. Housing revenue accounts, the housing revenue account is forecast to break even against approved budget to the year end. Housing revenue account capital, the core capital programme of eight point six million is progressing on budget. There is nothing additional to report at present. And the housing revenue account stock remodelling and new build is showing a one point one nine five million of rescheduled funds for potential schemes to be deferred to next year. And there is no change to report on the new build programme. So, Madam the Chair, the initial four recommendations discussed above are in the report at page eighteen and on the agenda item at page three. However, as we've both noted, there is the additional exempt papers concerning capital for which we all have those papers distributed. So there are five recommendations before us.
Councillor Ramsdale, thank you. Yes, we've, there are two items there that you mentioned, and one is the budget set aside for the toilets in South Street in Farnham. I think that it's an item that's been before many of us over the last two years at least, and we need to now move that forward. As you said, we have explored a number of options but haven't found a suitable alternative. And it's also worth remembering that whilst we have been in discussions with Farnham Town Council, we've been unable to actually have any formal sort of response from them in the last few months since we announced our proposals with the plans to build a new cafe in Gostrey Meadow. So I think it's absolutely right that these toilets, which have been redundant and somewhat run down and dilapidated for a great number of years, are demolished forthwith, and we move on with our other plans for Gostrey Meadow. Now, in terms of the other item, the item that is in exempt, and I know members have had ample opportunity to digest those papers on, it really does create an ideal opportunity for the council to move forward with its housing programme, and it really is in line with the business plan of the HRA. So I'm wholly supportive, and I hope you are too, of that recommendation, recommendation five. So, any comments, executive? Any additional comments? No? In that case, can I take it that the five recommendations under that item, item six, are agreed? Thank you. Moving to item seven, and this is the car parking review. Councillor Dinas.
Deputy Leader, Waverley Borough Council recognises that improved availability and good management of parking space is vital to town centres, local shops, and to thriving communities. Properly considered management of car parks and charging arrangements can positively influence the length of stay and traffic movements, and help reduce congestion in town centres. We last reviewed the management of our car parks in 2011 and made changes, including extending the charging period, extending it to seven PM. We have reviewed their management again, taking into account feedback from the community on this charge and other issues. As a result, we are proposing reducing the charging period back to six thirty PM, thereby giving the community an extra thirty minutes free parking. We're asking you to agree tonight that we begin a six-week statutory consultation on this proposal, and ask for a report back to the December executive on the results of that consultation. I'm also asking you to endorse the executive director's decision to repeat the free parking on Thursdays after three PM during December in the run-up to Christmas. The review has also recognised the importance of reinvesting in our car parks and improving them whenever possible, the need to review the usage of our free car parks and the provision for disabled badge holders in our car parks to ensure it is sufficient. We are recommending that officers are asked to report back on these issues in the new year. We are continuing to investigate alternative payment options to give motorists more flexibility and more leisurely visits to our towns and villages. The pay-by-phone service continues to grow in popularity, and we are actively engaged with the Cranley Chamber of Commerce to investigate the viability of other forms of pay on exit. Overall, this package of recommendations will result in further improvements to our parking in support of local commerce and the community. There are three recommendations which are outlined on page twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dinas. I think it's very important that we recognise that a lot of this has been done in consultation already. We've had a lot of really constructive feedback from our chambers of commerce, both in terms of the parking in December that we offer for shoppers and people coming into our towns and villages, and also the proposal to move to six thirty as our cut-off time for charging. And I think these are two proposals that hopefully traders and businesses will welcome. So clearly, we have to go to consultation. We will be coming back, as councillor Dinas said, in December. Colleagues, any other comments on this, please? No? In that case, can we take it that the three recommendations under item seven, are they agreed? Moving now to item nine, sorry, item eight. And again, councillor Dinas, it's the ageing well strategy.
Thank you, Deputy Leader. Publication of the 2011 census information highlighted that Waverley's population is changing. This has provided the council with an excellent opportunity to develop and produce its own ageing well strategy. The census showed that the number of people aged over sixty-five is projected to increase by fourteen per cent by 2020, and the number of people aged over eighty-five population is projected to increase by twenty-eight per cent by 2020. The council has a key role to play in recognising the opportunities and challenges ahead in catering for an ever-increasing older population. The ageing well strategy enables the council to continue to develop its existing services as well as new ones to enable older people to remain independent and feel valued. Work on the action plan began with the ten pledges of the Surrey Aging Well Commitment, developed through close consultation with residents and organisations throughout Surrey, including Waverley. These pledges offer a set of shared guiding principles and values which help plan and deliver services in conjunction with local people. The pledges were used as the foundation for a number of consultation exercises that were carried out. Three priorities emerged from this piece of work and provide the focus for the activities to be delivered within the action plan, and these are community, remaining independent at home, and assessing information and support. Examples of some of these activities identified within the action plan include befending schemes, access to information and advice, walks for health and housing. The action plan also shows how the council will work with and support the voluntary sector and its statutory partners, including Surrey County Council, adult social care, public health, and commissioning groups to deliver the plan. Further aim of the action plan is to align specific activities with key organisations to open up funding and commissioning opportunities to deliver these services. An annual report will be presented to councillors outlining the progress to deliver the outcomes of the action plan. There is much to do over the next five years, and our commitment to this strategy enables the council to make a real difference to the lives of some of our most vulnerable residents. There is one recommendation for the executive to consider, and that is set out on page thirty-nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Leader. Clearly, it's been set out, we're facing massively increasing demand. It's unfortunate that it's happening at a time when our funds are going to be challenged yet further, so I think it's excellent news that these plans have been put together, that we're planning ahead to the future, and we should be in a sound position to help meet these needs and serve this deserving part of our population. Thank you.
Yes, indeed. Thank you, councillor Ramsdale. Any other comments? No? In that case, we have one recommendation. Is that agreed, members? Item nine. We are now at item nine, and that's funding schemes for the voluntary sector. Councillor Reynolds.
Thank you, Deputy Leader. The council is extremely supportive of the thriving voluntary sector in the borough that delivers vital services to all our residents. It works in close partnership with many of these organisations, and one way is through its various funding schemes. I am pleased that the overall funding to the voluntary sector has remained the same for a number of years at three-quarters of a million pounds, despite the significant reduction the council has faced in its government grant. We will continue to protect funding to the voluntary sector, which supports so many of our most vulnerable residents as long as is possible. As part of this, I'm delighted to propose the launch of the council's annual funding scheme for next year, which provides vital funding towards the running costs of voluntary organisations delivering high priority services, and as usual, we would encourage eligible organisations to apply. Alongside this, I propose to continue the successful commissioning pilot in partnership with the Surrey County Council, which enables voluntary organisations to deliver projects that support the health and wellbeing of our residents. The council's funding schemes are highly regarded and demonstrate the great value we place on the work of the voluntary sector in our borough. There are two recommendations. Thank you.
Councillor Reynolds, thank you. Members, any other comments on this matter? No? In that case, we'll take item nine, two recommendations on page four. Are they agreed? Thank you. And moving on, councillor Reynolds, again, item ten, the SLAs, the Service Level Agreements.
Thank you. As part of a pilot for a new way of working with the voluntary sector, we came up with a pilot with the Citizens Advice Waverley, Waverley Hopper, Community Transport, and Farnham Maltings, who signed a three-year service level agreement with us in April 2012. At the time, this was a completely new approach for the council in working with its partners, and has proved extremely successful for all parties following extensive work to prepare organisations for this move. It moves us away from the traditional grant funding on an annual basis, which was the previous report I've given, and ensures greater accountability for the funding given using taxpayers' money. Through the Service Level Agreements, organisations are delivering clear outcomes that relate to the council's corporate priorities. The arrangements clarify expectations, enable organisations to budget, build stronger partnerships, and provide the opportunity to challenge as part of the process. Due to the success of the pilot, I'm pleased to say that SLAs have now been extended for a further three years with these three organisations, and four more organisations have also signed Service Level Agreements for 2015 to 2018. So this report merely outlines the key outcomes of the final year of the pilot SLA arrangements, and I would like to publicly thank those organisations, their staff, and volunteers for all the hard work in supporting our communities. And there is just one recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Reynolds. Councillor Martin?
Thank you, Deputy Leader. I wholeheartedly support this recommendation. As councillor Reynolds has said, this has been a terrifically successful period of three years providing stability to some really worthwhile organisations in the borough, and I'm delighted the more organisations are approaching the council to undertake similar situations. Being involved in a charity myself, I know only how important it is to have some sort of stability on the incoming funding that organisations have, so absolutely, a hundred per cent behind this.
Councillor Ramsdale?
Thank you, Deputy Leader. I too am very much in support of the use of SLAs. I'm delighted that the pilot project's been a success. What I wanted to note was, in this very chamber at a recent community in O S, the three charities concerned spoke to the committee about what life's been like working under an SLA for the last nearly three years, I think it is, and all of them said how the SLA was a much saw the SLA from a very positive view, that it had given them some permanence and certainty of funding to plan further ahead over the three-year period, and were, I think, delighted they were moving into another three-year period. So since both sides are seeing it as a plus, it's got to be a way forward. Thank you.
Councillor Adams?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Leader. Being involved in the first year of these SLAs, I can remember the few stresses and strains that were involved, and how it was quite a lot of effort actually to get the process working, both from Waverley's point of view and indeed from the organisation's point of view. So it is actually marvellous that it's all worked out so well, and has proved to be the success that was hoped for.
Yes, I too was around at the same time as councillor Adams, and I do remember that. But I think, as we've gone on to say, we've seen some fantastic successes with our SLAs, and let's hope that, you know, that continues and more organisations continue to go that route. I think the other benefit, as well as them actually having a much better understanding of their funding that comes out of an SLA, is the fact that we work together to make sure that there are really clear measures in place, some very clear goals and objectives, and that too is really, really important. And I think all round, it has meant that we've got much more collaborative working, which is very important as well. So I'm very pleased to see this coming forward, and again, I'm recommending, there's one recommendation that I'm recommending to you colleagues. Is that approved? Right, so we now move to item eleven. It's councillor Dinas again, and we're talking about air quality. Councillor Dinas, this time? Thank you.
Deputy Leader, thank you. Waverley Borough Council routinely monitors air quality throughout the borough, with particular emphasis on the air quality management areas in Godham and Farnham, which are assessed for options and strategies to improve air quality and ensure compliance with air quality standards. Waverley Borough Council submits annual progress reports to DEFRA as part of its statutory function through the local air quality management regime. Every third year, the APR, as the annual progress report, is replaced by a more in-depth review, known as the Updating and Screening Assessment. Air quality specialists were commissioned to carry out this three-yearly review, and the report was submitted to DEFRA for review. The three-year screening assessment, based on data collected during 2014, which is indicated by nitrogen dioxide concentrations, indicates that the air quality in Waverley has generally improved, which is good news. Levels are now lower in 2014 than in the previous year. As a result of the improving air quality, DEFRA have confirmed that there are no requirements for further detailed assessments to be carried out at this time. DEFRA have appraised the report and have fully accepted our findings and conclusions. Waverley Borough Council will continue to closely monitor air quality for its residents, and will continue to work with town councils and other agencies to investigate measures to address the issues in air quality management areas. I would ask the executive to agree, the recommendation is set out on page one hundred and three. Thank you.
Councillor Dinas, thank you. Colleagues, are there any additional comments you'd wish to make at this time? No? In that case, well, as councillor Dinas said, the O N S committees have considered this item and had no comment to make. So there is one recommendation, which is at the bottom of page five. Is that agreed? Thank you, colleagues. We move on to item twelve, which is the Performance Management Report, and that report you have in your agenda, pages one hundred and eighty-one to two hundred and two. Now, this report, which is in a new format, gives an analysis of the council's performance in the first quarter of 2015/16, and Annex One gives you a detailed view of each performance indicator. The council has reviewed the performance indicators to ensure that the information presented is useful and effective. I think it's very important that we regularly interrogate the information and ensure that this report really is of use to yourselves, and gives the information that we really need and want to see. You'll note, as I said earlier, that the format of the report has changed and includes really important geographical trend information. We discussed this long and hard, and as I say, we've found that this really is a much improved report, so my thanks to the officers who worked very long and hard on preparing this, and did a really extensive review. Performance overall in the first quarter has been good, particularly in the areas of planning, recycling, and the number of affordable homes being delivered, and also in terms of good news that homelessness has been prevented. And as I say, I would like to thank the overview and scrutiny committees as well for their consideration of the performance report and their comments as well. So the O N S comments are contained within the report, and there are two recommendations which are set out on page six of your agenda. Have you any comments to make? Thank you. Councillor Martin?
Thank you. As I say, a picture tells a thousand words, and I have to say, it's a lot more useful to see this performance information as a graph rather than just simply a bunch of statistics. So thank you very much, officers. I'm very, very pleased with the format, and I look forward to future reports.
Councillor Martin, thank you. Councillor Ramsdale?
Thank you, Deputy Leader. I too am pleased with the layout. I wouldn't want to criticise how it was laid out before, since we used it for quite some time, but I did find I was able to much more quickly absorb the information, and the comments being right alongside the figures rather than kind of split apart made it a much easier read, so thank you.
Yes, it is really very user-friendly, isn't it? So as I say, please do take our thanks back on that, officers. Councillor Reynolds?
Yeah, I too just want to say, it's very good, very clear, excellent clarity. And I'm also very pleased that while we're not quite there on recycling, it is a reasonable improvement on this time last year, which is good news. So there is an upward trend which is going well in the right direction, and I'm sure our current campaign will help us get to the sort of levels that we would like to see being achieved. So, well done.
And councillor Dinas?
Thank you. The importance for me is it, as you mentioned earlier, it identifies trends. It can also identify seasonal trends, which are very different, but most importantly, it could identify a risk, which enables us to do our work that much better. Just one final point, the comments that sit alongside the graphs, I think absolutely essential, because when I was looking at one of the red targets, it actually was one incident where they actually couldn't get access to a building, so it was beyond our control. So I think those comments put it into perspective, and it allows us to view it in a much better way, so I'm really impressed. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dinas. Yes, I think the consensus is that we are all extremely happy with this report, so thank you very much for all the hard work, officers, that went into this new report. Sorry, councillor Adams, I saw you just put up your hand, so you've got something to say?
I'd just like to congratulate the planning department on achieving almost a full set of greens. They've obviously set themselves a high target, and let's hope it continues that way.
Right, well, now we've all congratulated one another. Right, moving on, so we've got two recommendations which are set out on page six. Colleagues, are they agreed? Thank you. Moving on to item thirteen, and that's the creation of an overview and scrutiny subcommittee. Now, as part of its work programme, the corporate- Now, as part of its work programme, the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Committee has selected to undertake an in-depth review into the terms of reference and arrangements for overview and scrutiny at Waverley. Approval is therefore sought from the executive for the establishment of a joint overview and scrutiny subcommittee, which will act as a task and finish group to conduct the review. The membership of the subcommittee is proposed to be as follows. Councillor Pat Frost, chairman of Corporate Overview and Scrutiny, supported by councillors Wheatley and Isherwood; councillor Els, vice-chairman of Community Overview and Scrutiny, supported by councillors Lee and Edwards from that committee. Colleagues, is that agreed? Right, moving to item 14, which is the update on Waverley's housing allocation scheme, and that's councillor King.
Thank you very much, madam deputy leader. Sorry, I don't remember where I am today. Members will remember that in January 2013, we revised our housing allocation scheme in view of the freedom we had under the Localism Act to be able to limit the access to our housing stock and to housing register. This has strengthened the criteria for eligibility for the to be included on the list. It's had a staggering effect really on the number of people registered for housing. You'll see from the table on the top of page 204, we, if you will remember, strengthened the requirement to have ties to Waverley and the other various other pre-registration process, the whole process was tightened up. This has turned out to be very successful, and we have now managed our numbers far better. So I'm really happy about it. The register now more reflects in a far better way the true housing need in Waverley, and mostly, as I say, people with a connection to the borough. The two-stage process and the verification checks have helped to detect fraud or to eliminate fraud much more, which we will not tolerate, and it ensures that our applicants discharge their debts to Waverley before they get on the list. Because we have such a limited supply of housing allocated to houses, households, sorry, excuse me, who are in real housing need and have the local connection to the borough, and have appropriately addressed any debts they may have had with Waverley, the scheme continues to support the housing options team in their work to prevent homelessness as well, which, as we mentioned earlier, is really important, and it's very, very good in this borough, I have to say. And I support the recommendation on page 205. Thank you very much indeed.
Councillor King, thank you. Members, any other comments? Councillor Ramsdale?
Thank you Deputy Leader. Housing is a massive, significantly significant service for us, because it then puts a big demand on our finances. I think it's really key that we are able to focus it and know exactly who we're focusing on for the houses that we have got, and I'm really pleased that this has come forward and support councillor King in the way she's pushing this through, so thank you.
Councillor Ramsdale, thank you. Moving to the recommendation, there is one recommendation, colleagues, on page seven. Is that agreed? Right, moving to item 15, and again councillor King, it's the consultation outcomes on proposals for developments of sheltered services for older people.
Thank you very much. Again, you will remember that this paper came before you some while ago, looking at the, excuse me, I've got a really chiky throat tonight, at the way we manage our sheltered housing stock and how we look after our more vulnerable residents in the borough. We promised to go out and consult with all our tenants and with all our staff, and we have done so. This report is the outcome of that consultation. I'm pleased to say that it was received extremely well. The tenants, I went to most of the consultations with the tenants, with our housing manager and staff, and it was quite an interesting experience. They are not likely to experience any real change in the way their day-to-day lives are organised, they will still have one full-time manager in every sheltered unit, there will be a budding system whereby they float, if someone's away on sick, so there's always going to be coverage, whatever happens there. I think it's going to be a, I think it will benefit, it will benefit, I know, it's moving forward in the way we provide our services. Consultation with members of staff who are affected is about to commence. I won't go into any other details on that at the moment, and I commend the recommendations on page 221 to you, madam chairman. Thank you.
Councillor King, thank you. Yes, as you say, it's, there's been a detailed consultation, and I think it's really good as well that, as you say, they, there will still be support there, obviously, so that is needed, and that will still be in place. So the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Committee have also considered this report, and its observations can be found on page 221. In order, in order, there are five recommendations. Any other comments, members, or can we take it that those five recommendations are agreed? Thank you. And moving to item 16, councillor Martin, the strategic asset management plan.
Thank you Deputy Leader. Over recent years, the council's property team have seen many improvements, and have moved this council, I think, to a predominantly reactive, from a predominantly reactive organisation to a far more proactive one with regards to our properties. As such, I am very pleased to recommend the strategic asset plan for the general fund properties that is before us. This is very much a working document, and I think it can be adapted over time as our situation changes. It's the first time this council actually has a strategy for our many property assets, and I'm sure that it will serve us well and provide a framework which will help guide both us and our offices in this field. I wholeheartedly commend the proposal for this strategy, be endorsed, and recommended to council for approval.
Councillor Martin, thank you. Colleagues, you will have noted that this report, for very obvious reasons, is actually, the majority of it is in exempt, so if you want to sort of comment in any great specific detail, we will need to move into exempt, but if you've got any general comments you'd like to make. Councillor King?
Thank you very much. I'm delighted to see this report come forward. I think it's not before time that we had a proper strategic asset plan for our general fund properties. Thank you.
Thank you councillor King. Any other comments? In that case, there's one recommendation, which is on page eight. Is that agreed? Moving to item 17, executive directors' actions. Mr Wenham, would you like to sum up your actions?
Thank you. Thank you chairman. Earlier on the year, the executive may remember agreeing to undertake a survey of the museum while we were doing some maintenance works and had some scaffolding up. That was really timely because we identified that we needed to spend nineteen and a half thousand on urgent works to the brickwork, and in agreement with the leader and deputy leader, I've taken that action on behalf of the council. Thank you chairman.
Thank you, Mr Wenham. Yes, I understand, talking to the borough engineer, that this, we can now proceed and this important work will move forward before the real, you know, winter weather sets in, which is even more important, given that we're talking about a grade one listed building, and clearly we need to be very sensitive to that. So thank you for summarising that. Any other comments? There's no need to exclude the press or public, and there's nothing else to be considered in exempt, so I therefore close the meeting. Thank you.